Lisa.
What is it?
Thank you.
County Council.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Father God, we turn to you this morning. We're mindful and thankful, our country and those that lead it in the upper echelons. We pray you would watch over them and seek, ask them to seek guidance from you above. We pray for local decisions made here by our board. We pray for wisdom and direction as we do that and discuss things today. We are mindful and thankful also of our servants that keep us safe, the sheriff's department and everyone that is on the front line. We pray and watch over them and keep them safe. Ask all things in the name of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. First item in the business were the minutes. We had both regular and executive sessions from our February 16 meeting. I'll entertain a motion unless we need further discussion. About a second.
Second, yep.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero. Okay, fourth payroll claim for 2021 totals $256,562.92. We had 148 claims totaling $1,347,627.07. I entertain a motion for the financials.
So move.
Motion, second, second. On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero. Sheriff, right to you.
It's because they know you've got a lot going on.
Uh huh.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning.
As of this morning, we had, we have 78 inmates in jail. Thirty-one of those are pretrial Superior, 19 pretrial Circuit, 14 F6, and nine DOC. Think I may have brought up the last meeting, DOC, Indiana DOC has opened up a second intake facility to try and help with the backlog of DOC. We were able to get some to them the other week. Obviously, we have to keep a steady stream of that going or that'll start building up, but hopefully once they get that dialed in, that'll help us, at least on the DOC part, a little bit. I gave you guys the annual jail report. Take some time, look at that. If you guys have any questions about that, you can get with me. As far as the items on there, it's kind of our list of stuff we've dealt with for the year, unfunded projects, those type of things, which probably coincide with some of the jail renovation stuff and the projects that are being pursued there. Jury trials are starting back up today, so those have been suspended quite a while for, for the COVID reasons, so there's actually a jury selection going on right now for Circuit Court as of this morning, so hopefully we can start getting those things going. So there might be a backlog moving forward when, when it comes to jury trials, but those, those are happening. And I have brought up as well, we're finally getting some action going on the video court. That was approved. Counsel approved what? Financials were not covered through a sizable grant that Judge Kirchhoff got out of Circuit. The rest was funded through CARES Act. The council approved that. So Styless is getting that project rolling. They already got some dates set to start installing some equipment. It's going to be a work in progress. It'll be a great system that'll also help us with a lot of different things we can do through the courts as far as not transporting inmates in and out of the facility in that retrospect. So I'm excited to finally get that going in both courts. And as far as the jail project stuff, I know that's kind of elevatus, and Amoresco are still doing their study stuff as far as trying to dig in a little bit deeper as far as the needs for the jail. Elevatus was out last week. Amoresco is looking to come out and look at more detailed stuff as far as the HVAC system and stuff and that side of the jail, so I don't have anything really to report on progress to what has already been reported to you guys from that standpoint. So, other than that, I don't have anything else unless any of you guys got any questions.
Scott, council meeting, any reference to discussion on the jail tomorrow night or anything that you're aware of?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
So, I know.
Anyone else? I'm not aware of anything right now. Are you?
No, I haven't heard, no.
No. I know there was some alternative questions that Steve Huggins sent out an email as far as some things to consider and look into. I think he knows somebody that, I can't remember where it was from. You're nodding your head, so I don't know if you remember.
I remember the email.
Yeah.
DLR.
Yeah.
I think I'm in Florida or something.
Yeah. Three quarters of those questions, I felt like were answered and presented to counsel.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But, you know, there's some alternative things that they want to look into or studies. You know, I'm all for whatever. I just think we need to continue to move forward and not just stay stagnant, whether we do something or not. I, I think we need to continue to pursue that, so hopefully I'll try to get some direction from council to what they think is the next steps. I know they've been, you know, looking into different options and those type of things. I've met with a member or two of the council that has come and looked at the facility just to kind of lay eyes on all this talk of what, what we've been dealing with and what we're going through out there, so. And I know some of you guys have come out and looked as well, so. But at this point, I mean, it's kind of in their hands as far as, I'll provide as much information as I can and, and help along the way. I can just present the facts and.
Right. Well, and I think when this, that all started way back when, I mean, it was clear that just some internal update slash renovations would help alleviate some of your stress, and I think when we started the project and then it escalated a little bit to the different questions they had on the different, you know, amounts of adding on.
Yeah.
You know, doing their due diligence, which was great. I mean, it helped, helped me.
Yeah. I mean, obviously it would make sense if we're going to do something to do it as a whole, but if, if that's going to be the thing that holds us back, then we need to get moving on some, some other things, whether it be smaller things.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm saying in terms of if, and it didn't, I wasn't getting a good feeling that way, so I guess just the internal renovations that we started with would, to get back to that, because the funding would be a lot less, I mean, the cost.
Sure, most definitely, yep. But I just know that whatever it is, I can look at from the smallest amount it was in the beginning to what council had asked for.
Right.
To be presented to them is, no matter what project it is, you're looking at a long time before that gets completed.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, you can't come in and raise a barn in a day. It's, it's going to take a good year, if not more, to get any of those projects done. So, we just, you know, I appreciate you guys' support and, you know, as the caretakers of the facility to, to take an interest in it that you guys have and the support of just saying status quo is, is obviously going to be an issue sooner or later, and so we just need to figure out what that plan is.
Right. And I think it became very apparent when they started to get in the internal portions of the building to find out what you and previous sheriffs have done to maintain that building and keep the standards up that would also diminish the overall cost of the renovation project.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Definitely, because had that not been done, then it would have been lax over the years. It would have cost a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Well, I don't have anything else.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Keep the snow away.
Okay, yeah.
Please, please.
I thought that, I thought that snow would be here till spring, but it went away quick, didn't it?
Yeah. I'm all for that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, Kim.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Last week, we finished cleaning our equipment up and doing some repairs on it, cleaned to shop, stuff like that. The brush cutter's been running down south, cutting some brush, getting some of that taken care of. Today, we're out, the beginning of the week, cutting brush, trying to tidy up some stuff, get it done. At the end of the week, we're hoping, weather permitting, that we can maybe start grading and kind of start taking care of them because we're starting to get some phone calls about the gravel roads.
They're squishy.
Yes, yes, and they're going to be.
They will be.
And they're going to be real bad around the woods and stuff, but the hole wise, they're not too bad, but it's going to happen. Next week, we plan on grading, trying to get over them a couple of times and maybe start spotting some stone on the roads. That way, we know where the soft spots are and stuff like that. We got to grade them, of course, at first. So, then we're going to also start cold mixing next week on the potholes on the paved roads. We'll go get some cold mix and we'll start doing some of that. I'm sure they're going to start showing up.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, you go from zero to 50 degrees, 60 degrees.
Back and forth. Of course, the thaw's coming out of the ground, so it's, it's going to be about time that we're going to have to start doing something, so. Other than that, we got the bids.
We've got two bids for the dust control. We've got one bid from the Clint Group and another from pavement solutions. Go ahead and open those up, the Clint Group bid here.
Did we have an opening, did we have a marathon at Indianapolis one, one time before?
We have in the past. They, I'm not sure if they do the dust stay.
Okay.
They might do just the bituminous, the nut oil for the roads, chip and seal.
Chip and seal.
That'll be coming up.
Yeah, we sent them bids out, or we got them ready super.
Click on their bid form, their antinectis, semantic collusion. Let me go ahead and read those numbers off.
First application rate, 40 gallon per square yard, $1.45 a gallon. Second application, 20 gallon per square yard, $1.49 a gallon. And delivered to Wells County in full load truck quantities is $1.24 a gallon.
Your second bid is from pavement solutions, Inc. Looks like they've got their bid bond. It's on the bid form one. There's the, the non collusion affidavit signed, and then there's their bid.
The first coat is $1.50 a gallon, and on the second coat is $1.54 a gallon.
So, I guess what we can do with that is.
Take it under advisement.
Take it under advisement and come back at the next meeting on putting together some of the estimates as far as what we'll put in the paper for the dust control offer to the public, but.
I'm making a motion that we take these bids under advisement, refer them to the county highway superintendent and engineer for their approval and get back to us at the next meeting.
Second. Any discussion on favor, I.
Aye.
Aye.
Three zeros.
Not too much.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should have brought the knife, I suppose, but it's usually frowned on.
I have one, but I don't want to whip mine out.
Whip the knife, I mean, necessary.
Well, that's pretty mighty, next.
Wow, is that a wow?
You guys are here, you won't take those.
You think they get you bigger?
Are we good?
That's all for me.
That's it?
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kim.
Seriously?
We'll see you here.
Yep. I was not there. Promise.
Appreciate it. Well, I come with good news, and unfortunately, I think you're the last group to hear officially, but Wells County was awarded federal aid in the latest call last week. We got funds for our Bridge 71 project totaling for construction, construction, inspection, just $1,546,560. That'll be just that, again, the construction, construction inspection dollars. We'll have some additional awards, I believe, for the engineering, any right-of-way acquisition, utility, relocation that would be part of that project, so those will be additional awards beyond that. I need to have a pre, a kickoff meeting with Endop for both of these projects, which will kind of outline some of the schedule and timing. The second award was really the big one. It is for County Road 200 South. That was awarded $3,505,736 for Adam Street, or from Adam Street. It'll take 200 South from Adam Street just over to the intersection of Clark and Hoosier Highway. It'll actually redo that intersection there. The kicker for that, obviously, is that it includes a grade separation, so we'll be taking County Road 200 South over the railroad tracks. So you'll get your first one in Wells County to separate that for the railroad. That'll eventually, our goal would be to redo the road, continue that all the way over to State Road One, but it really sets the tone for you having a, a south bypass, really a south corridor from State Road One over to the industrial park. So, that'll be a really amazing project for us. Too, too bad it's going to take five years to get there, but, you know, now we've got a track set up for it, so I'm quite excited for that. That totals just over $5 million in grand awards. Hopefully, we'll have a little bit more as we move along, so we'll keep it up.
How soon are you going to put those out? Knowing you, you probably haven't ready to go, right?
It's, as soon as I get the meeting with Endop, we'll be putting out the RF request for proposals from the consulting world. So, I've already warned a couple of them, and I'm surprised I don't have consultants already chomping at it, so we'll be.
They will.
Oh, yeah, they'll be.
I was going to say, give it 30 days.
Yeah. Once it hits, you'll all get calls. If you have any questions, if you start getting calls from consulting engineering firms, just refer them over to me. I'll go through the process of the selection that we have to follow. Just as soon as I get that meeting with Endop, I'll know the procedure that they want to follow with it, so I'm hoping to get that meeting in here the next week or two.
Okay.
I have an unofficial detour. There's a project that Endop's proposing to do on State Road 116. Detour will be from 116 North on State Road 301, West on County Road 100 South, and Northwest on State Road 201, and then South on County Road 450 East, kind of returning back to 116. I am recommending approval for this route.
So move.
Second.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero.
And we'll monitor that route. If there's damages to the county roads within it, you can see I listed a lot of state routes. If there's damages within that, we can request funds from the state for their repair, so. And if we have a lot of divergent drivers that are taking other routes, we'll keep the negotiation with the state. It is supposed to be a fairly short closure because it's just a bridge deck overlay, so they're going to mill an overlay that deck, so I think they had like 14 days for that schedule. Community crossings, matching grant are Bridge 121 and the Garberell Extension on County Road 600 East. That bid opening is this Thursday, so I should have that, and I should be able to give you some numbers for that at your next meeting, so we'll see where that project's at. The county's regional sewer district actually has their board meeting on March 8th, so next Monday night. There'll be pre-closing and closings with SRF on the 10th and the 24th, so that project is very close to getting ready to kick off, so hopefully in April, we may be seeing dirt moving and construction going on for those two areas. Other item we got is just kind of a notice to you. I've got utility permits that I got from the gas company requesting removal of three inactive farm gas taps. I'm going to do those as an administrative approval because it just needs one signature for that. It's just essentially removing obstructions from the public right-of-way, so we'll move with those, and there are.
Where are those located? Just, you even melt the top of your head. It's not on Meridian, is it? Between 3 and 4 South?
No, we got one on County Road 800 South, West and 450 West. There's one on 800 South and another one at 450 West. Yeah, so maybe it's just.
Just those locations.
Just those locations here. There's a bellhole there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll get those, I'll go through those and get those turned back in to the gas company, so. Want to take, take care of those. Anything we get out of the right-of-way would be nice, so. And then the last item I have is a right-of-way dedication, two, three of them, three right-of-way dedications I'd recommend approval on. Minor subdivisions, I believe.
You brought in two and one from Hartland.
Oh, it's that, months ago. We've had that discussion with Hartland, and they were going to give the right-of-way for a variance, so they gave the right-of-way, and then the other two are minor subdivisions, so.
Yeah. Second.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero.
Excellent. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Nate.
Sure.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. These nates did a job on us.
Yes.
Page.
Good morning. Good morning. I am the new executive director of Family Centered Services, and I'd like to come and request continued support of $15,000 for our youth programming. Primarily, this will be allocated towards our teen court programming, and any not used with that then would be allocated across all the programming to make up for any budget shortfalls.
And we've done that over the last.
Who was your previous?
Amy George.
Amy was.
Yeah, that's who.
I'm the new Amy.
You're the new Amy?
I started at the end of November.
So many years of Amy.
Yeah, exactly. You got me for a while, you know. Yeah, I started in November and promptly got COVID and was out for two months, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I had a bad case.
Motion approved.
Second. On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
There you go. Okay. A lot of other items under Ms. Lane, so.
Let's start with the commons event permit. This is for the shred event that is going to take place May 1st from 9:00 to noon. The city has already approved the use of that, and I just need your approval.
So move.
Second.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Three zero.
The rest are mainly noise.
One thing, we had a request from a adjoining property owner across the road on the, from Mossburg Farm, wanting to reroute his tile, and I understand from talking with Nate and Jared that there's, there's tile on Mossburg's side that's kind of more in the center of the farm, but for the development for the county highway garage would probably be more effective to be moved to the west line, and that's where Mr. Feigler would like to do it. He wants to get in on his side of the road and start that before he starts field work and wants to connect it to what would be then the county's property, but it's not the county yet, and so I've had an email from Mike Mossburg, survey's done, he'd like to close as soon as possible, and it's like, well, we had a six-month option that we've never even formally exercised yet, let alone closed, so I told the, I told Mr. Feigler that I would bring that up to the commissioners to see what they wanted to do. Might be possible to do that if we had some agreement with Mossburg that, okay, he'd allow us to go ahead and do the tiling even though we haven't purchased it yet, or you could.
That way, it doesn't start the clock.
Well, or you could decide to go ahead and buy it, but get an agreement with him that, that our exiting of the present county highway garage is extended six months, because we would have had six months on our option.
Sure. I think moving the tile makes sense, but who's going to pay for the road crossing? The BU, Ken?
We usually do. Whatever crosses the road, we usually pay for the pipe and.
Talking with the section crossing 200 South, or are you talking about the section?
No.
200 South.
Two, yeah, 200 South and moving.
We would just absorb that into our budget as far as a project, unless you bundled it into the overall construction of the highway garage or negotiated something separate.
In regards to the right-of-way, you said, if I'm not sure, maybe Jared said that right-of-way currently is 40 on 200 South?
I believe that's correct.
He, he had some proposals as to who's going to pay for what, and, and one way, if the county paid for it, he'd give us an easement on his side of the road. Unfortunately, he doesn't own all of the north side of the road.
There's one house.
Well, there's one house, and he's told me that he has a verbal understanding with that owner to buy two acres to the east, so there's, that would be more property that we'd have to get a right-of-way from. I called.
Gotcha.
I called Mike Watsonizer to see, well, is that going to be a sell-off or is that an addition too? And he says it's an addition too, since he's just adding two acres to the two acres or whatever that's presently owned, so there wouldn't be any requirement by area plan that.
To relinquish the right-of-way.
They give a right-of-way. See, on part of a minor subdivision, area plan has been requiring the.
Additional.
Landowner to give a right-of-way on the property that's being subdivided, and, and that's, I said, well, what's the basis for that? And he says, well, it's on the basis of the zoning requirements that the property that's being split off has adequate access. So to show it's got adequate access for some time now, that's why we have all these minor subdivision right-of-ways that are giving the county a 40-foot right-of-way. So, there's your choices as to, okay, we'll go ahead and do that, and, and do that by either closing with Mossburg so we own it, or getting his permission to do property on the land we don't own yet. So it amounts to, you know, maybe spending the balanced purchase price earlier than you intended, and if you're going to do that, I would say, well, you know, we had this timed for exiting the present highway garage based on six months, and then what was it, 12 or 18 or whatever, and we want, we don't want to disturb that, and there's no reason why he wouldn't.
I would see.
Yeah, so, that's your choices.
Nate, in regards to making or having 200 become the in-out route, do you see a benefit for having more right-of-way to have drainage?
Get that from the 20, the 20 feet high right-of-ways or 40 foot total to a 60 foot total right-of-way from west of Adam Street will be, will certainly be valuable. I think when 200 South is improved in 2026, even before then, there's going to be prospective buyers trying to acquire portions of that ground, so I think it would be ideal to get that right-of-way as we can and look from there all the way over Meridian, because I think you're going to have traffic trying to go west there. Now, the goal would be, obviously, for them to think Hoosier South and stuff like that, but you're not going to be able to stop drivers that want to come in from that west side anyway.
Right. We're just talking Feigler's farm.
Yeah, so you're just getting a piece of it.
And not having, is it Falk, a little, and then the balance, do you picture that being an obstacle trying to make that happen with Adam Street in two, three years?
Feigler, Feigler told me that Falk doesn't actually live there.
No, it's a rental, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
So, so if he's getting another two acres, the approach to him would be, give us a 40-foot right-of-way just like Feigler is, because that's going to improve the extension to utilities on the north side of the road, it's going to enhance the value of your property.
Especially if we use that side of the road and that right-of-way to extend utilities to the future highway garage, then they'll have direct access with no need for a road cut. It would save them money.
Right.
If they give us that right-of-way, then that would be a, certainly would be a deciding factor for us as far as how we would serve our facility. So, their property value would essentially go up because of the savings. Value go up or lost savings in the end, depends on how you all look at it.
So currently, based on, I don't have a map on my Beacon Snyder, but yeah, I can bring it up. So currently, based on, I don't have a map on my Beacon Snyder, but yeah, I can bring it up. The, the area, you're saying he, he has a verbal approval?
What he told me. He didn't have anything in writing, but he promised Falk or whoever that owns that property that he would, they would sell them. About two acres or whatever.
Do, okay. Are you familiar with what we're talking about?
I am.
Okay, this, this corner parcel right here, he's giving us the right of way here.
Yes, this option three here was.
Right, so I'm just, I'm trying to picture if we get it here and don't have it here, how much of a struggle it will be trying to.
To get through to that other point?
Right.
Right, I see what you're saying, absolutely.
We got to go from that intersection this way.
And right now he's saying he just has a verbal that that would be acceptable or?
Right, that this, this person wants to buy this squared off corner.
Right, but he's got a verbal that we could have the right of way there also or no?
No.
He does not, okay.
So do we know if Fichter bought the entire parcel and, and Fichter is going to sell the remaining parcel? Or was it split? Because currently, right now, the parcel is in both names of Curtain Lance.
So I mean, if they're willing to give their right of way, at least it allows us to get it over to the edge of the Falk property now. We can go to Falk and ask them if they would donate the right of way as well as part of our project with the highway garage. If our utilities could stay there, they'll save thousands of dollars if not.
Yeah, so that piece will be straight there.
To those utilities.
The square right here.
So that's really our only obstacle right now is that little piece?
Currently, the whole entire parcel is in Curtain Lance's name.
So until we get some sort of notification from him, that's very good.
Does the agreement between the previous owner can't be, right?
Right.
It's going to be between Fichter's.
See if they'd be willing to work with us.
Not in writing, but he said.
Is someone living there right now or no?
So he's going to do that.
So if we agree to.
So owner's not there.
Giving us the extra right of way, right now, we would want the whole thing that he owns.
I didn't.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't want to take advantage of him to do that.
We've got some options as far as our.
If you've got agreement to sell, but it's kind of uncooled.
It would just kind of be one last piece to make an easement.
Right, right.
And then it wouldn't matter because we still got to get it from Falk anyway, so.
Right.
What's the, what's the difference?
Right.
I wouldn't want to muck it up.
Right, could we, could we make that tentative on the decision from Falk on, on his part?
I think.
What's that?
Could we make a tentative, the decision tentative on the decision from Falk or no?
There's two ways of this. There's always, we have, we've never used that, but that's always a possibility in the domain.
Yeah, you, yeah, you don't want to if you don't have to.
You don't want to, but the other way is, is I'd rather use the care in saying.
We better, yeah, we're better just asking.
If, if, we, we are going to get from Fichter, we'd like to get from you an easement for that north side of the road.
Sure.
And here's what we're going to do. We're going to extend utilities. And hopefully he's not going to take a rocket scientist to figure out that he's got utilities.
Definitely a value add there, absolutely.
His property is more valuable. I doubt he's going to build a home there in what's now an I-1 area. So that would be my thought.
But really, that option three is really, it makes sense currently. Right, I mean, that's what it looks to me.
Have, have any soil tests been done or anything to?
On the prospective site?
Yep.
We know more about that part.
We've got, we've got six months to do all this checking out.
Yeah, I haven't been authorized to really execute anything yet. So, I mean, if we're ready to start doing soil testings and boring for foundation designs and I really need to get a design firm in place to make sure whatever tests we do, we're going to be, be adequate. Want to make sure we don't want to do soil tests or.
That's why we've got six months for the date the contract was signed to do that.
Yep, so.
We don't wait, you shouldn't wait till five months to then decide.
Yeah.
That's not doing the 11th hour. I, I could, I could have proposals for some that ready for your next meeting if you'd like. You just let me know.
Do we have, for just getting the soil testing, we need proposals or can we just pick three?
It's professional service, so you just pick one. I mean, if you want me to just, I could use the firm I've used for a lot of our bridge designs. I just need to know, I, I don't want to get tested one corner of a 20-acre parcel when you say, well, we're going to put the building over here. Or this is what your architect wants. I want to make sure that I coordinate with the design firm to make sure they're not going to say.
Where we do it is in the location the building will be.
I want to get them to at least bless it before we do it and they argue that we have to do it a second time.
Who's that you use?
Al Witzig.
Spell that for me.
A L T, and then Witzig, W I T Z E G.
Z I G.
The I G?
I G.
Something, I think it's I G.
Go ahead.
Kev, you got a feeling one way or the other on those three proposals? Three? And that's kind of what I'm, I'm leaning, just if it's there and.
I mean.
But contingent on Falk?
Yeah.
I like the idea.
So we'll make that motion. Kev, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Second.
All favor I?
Aye.
Three zero. Okay, Cume, Cap.
Development Fund. How about the emergency declaration?
Oh, we can do that too.
I've only got, do you have more than one draft?
I have a draft.
Of the ordinance?
But I have a copy machine.
You have a new, you have a new copy machine?
I have two drafts of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance?
Yep, and one copy of the disaster.
Does one of them had a, have a revision date somewhere on the bottom or top?
Um, the disaster declaration has a revision. So the other one?
Yep.
How to run it.
Did you get the main?
Yeah.
I printed out the last one. I think, was that the one I asked the question about? Which one should I print?
Well, that could have been the declaration form. We had two things. One would be the ordinance. And the purpose of the ordinance would just be to say, in the event that the commissioners declare a local disaster emergency, how do we get it signed and disseminated? And, and following last month when we decided that for N dot contracts, they could be signed by the council, by, by Commissioner President or in his absence, another commissioner. I basically used that same language to say, well, if we've got an emergency, how do we get that done? And, and that does not mean the commissioners are not going to consult. It's still a commissioner decision, but an emergency, the three of you talk among yourselves. And then if you decide to declare that emergency, how do you get about doing it? Do you all have to be, sign it? And that, this ordinance would say, no, the Commissioner President could sign it. And, and actually, once that decision's made, if necessary, the auditor who's got the stamps can fix the signature and then disseminate it. So we have that done. So that's part one, the ordinance. And that only has to do with how do we get the local disaster emergency declared and that information disseminated, okay? As part of the local disaster emergency declaration, you can, you're not required to. But your, your local disaster emergency may include an advisory warning. And so if you do declare a local disaster emergency and you choose to have a travel advisory, then it says you're supposed to designate which of the three categories. Is it a advisory? Is it a watch or is it a warning? So I prepared, so anyways, that's, that's the gist of the ordinance. The part two is the actual declaration form that would you be signed. And on that, I've gone through a couple of drafts to include, Commissioner Vanover says, well, I, I, you know, you could declare it for seven days. I think that's, I think that's too long. So I put in a blank for you to say, blank, days or hours. I mean, the whole point of this is design a form so that you're, you've got one you can use when you're ready to go and not have to reinvent the wheel each time. But that's, that's part two of this. So part one is the ordinance says how we, you know, how we, how we meet or how we declare and how we sign and disseminate the local disaster emergency. So that's what I've got for you. And I don't think I've got a lot of drafts on that because it was just saying how to sign it. The one that had multiple drafts was the declaration form. Okay? So I've got the local, the ordinance for your consideration.
Do you have Mike comments, input?
I don't have any problems.
Yeah, I'm okay with that one, that one, yeah.
I mean.
The signatures.
We probably hardly will ever use it.
Right.
It's kind of like.
Some assistant employees.
Right, and I know with Rick, you know, if you get to a certain level.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to do certain things, so.
All this started because Rick sent a form and painted a model form. It didn't make any changes and on the face of the form, you couldn't sign it anyways.
Yeah, and then the second part of that is, well, we set up at seven days, maybe we put it 48 hours, is that more?
Well, you, the statute says it can't exceed seven days.
Okay.
So that shouldn't mean anytime you declare one, I don't think it would depend on the nature of the emergency.
Exactly, I agree.
So, so the declaration form, which I didn't print out, at least I may have some drafts, has a blank for you to put in, blank, and then it says days or weeks. So you make your choice then.
Okay.
At that time.
At that time, yeah. So what's created, we decide.
Yep, yep, all right. I make a motion that we approve first.
My second.
And that's ordinance 2021 dash?
O two.
O two.
O two. So now that we pass the ordinance, the actual form you adopt, I'm fine if you, if you're ready to choose one and if you're not, that's, that's fine too. Unless Rick needs something for what's already happened.
Now, I know they use colors on those different levels, which, what was it?
Yeah, orange and red.
Yeah, yeah. Are we following that same?
Yeah, Rick always follows that, so.
Stay void.
Yeah.
I remember when that first came into play, it was not, everybody had their own idea of what was going on, right?
Sure.
Remember those days?
Yes.
Yeah.
They still do.
A little bit, they do.
And there's no rhyme or reason. No, cars are still out on the road when it's red. I mean, people run your way, whatever, I mean.
Well, how many people did you run into that abandoned their vehicles?
Crazy.
Exactly.
I can't fathom why anybody would abandon their vehicle. That, I mean, that just.
They do it.
It's, it's amazing to me.
Yeah, I liked the one from Michigan about five years ago.
Yeah.
Well, when I seen the one on Elm Grove Road, I thought, then I looked at the paper and it had been there for four hours, like.
We had one down south. It was a delivery van. The transmission went out, kind of getting, getting himself unstuck. They pulled it in the middle of the road because it was in the side ditch.
That's.
They just left it there. And the guy, I mean, just abandoned it, so.
All right. What do we get next, Roy?
I finally got from the city attorney, a substantially identical ordinance on the tax sale certificates. So I've prepared an assignment of the tax sale certificates. There were five. So I have those. The tax sale certificate assignment form just has a place for one signature. So I would suggest authorize the Commissioner President to sign the tax sale assignment certificates.
Motion approved.
Second, all favor I?
Aye.
Just right here?
Yep.
Right there.
Each one of them?
Yep.
Upside down.
And then the Cumulative County Capital Development Fund. We had this last year, even advertised it, and it was scheduled for hearing, and I think that's when.
COVID hit.
COVID hit. So it got dropped. At least I got a memo from the D L G F.
Yep.
On, you know, if you're going to do this, you've got to have everything in by April 30. I dusted it off and, and updated what I did last year. We didn't get that far because you never adopted one, so we didn't publish a notice that you'd adopted it. But when I looked at the D L G F memo, it's, it had a 30-day period to file a remonstrance. But then it said, two funds don't require it. They only require a 10, and one of those was the Cumulative County Capital Fund. So I changed that notice to 10 to reflect that. So we're, and I updated those forms. I mailed them to you with the statute to reiterate. The commissioners create the fund, but you don't.
Ceterate.
Ceterate and impose the tax. That's for council to do. So your part is to create the fund that allows council to decide to levy a tax. And there are limits on what that tax can be depending on first year and subsequent years. So, and, and Mike, you had a comment, well, it doesn't, you know, is it going to raise taxes? Well, yeah, because you're levying a tax, so it would. What I don't know is whether or not that is underneath your cap or if that's an exception to the cap.
It's outside the levy.
It's outside the levy? Okay, so you can, we can, you, it would, it would raise, it would increase taxes, but it's outside the levy. So it's not going to require, it's not going to take money from somewhere else on the budget.
Right, but even if we pass it, the council could say, we're going to wait.
Well, the, the point is to have the fund.
Right, exactly.
Now that they're looking at, and you are all looking at jail expansion, highway garage, you know, do, is this an opportunity for, for council and the commissioners to think about setting a fund for these things rather than always being reactive to how are we going to do this when, when we've got to do something now, so.
But the, the answer though, is my understanding is that the creation of this, this fund in, in of itself doesn't necessarily create another tax. It's just a mechanism that can be populated with funds from somewhere else at a later time that council would decide upon.
Yes, yes, I, I sent, yesterday I sent commissioners all a copy of that statute and, and that. So it, it creates the, the fund and that's the depository. The fund can only be used for certain purposes, but rather than copying all the 20-some statutes, it says what you can use it for. You know, they said you can, you can specifically say it'll be used for this or they say, they, meaning D L F G, you can say for any lawful purpose. So that's what I chose to do because I don't, I don't, we have a few trees immediately in our presence, but when you're talking about the future. So that's, you know, if you want to say, what can we use it for? That's why I'd say you'd have to look at those 10 or 12 sections of the code. So anyways, so the steps are, to get all this done by the 30th would be for the commissioners not to adopt the ordinance today, but to advertise that you're going to have a hearing on the adoption of a Cumulative County Capital Development Fund. So you publish notice twice, you have that hearing after you pass the ordinance, then you publish a notice that you've adopted it. That has a 10-day remonstrance. You don't have to meet again, just it says, I think the statute says 50 or more taxpayers can, can sign a remonstrance. And, and then that would be heard by the D L F G. The state would hear that and decide whether or not to. The state would hear that and decide whether or not to.
Clearly gives the council the, the vehicle should they see fit.
We've, we've done that before in other things on, on a bot ordinance. You've adopted a bot ordinance that requires you to use a bot statute to, to build a jail or an improvement to the jail or county high garage, it just says if.
If they want to.
If you did, if, if your financial advisors determine that that's effective way to do this project, it gives you that opportunity. Also, you know, the use of the Cumulative County Development, or Capital Development Fund is another tool. And it might, might take a while to build some funds in that, but.
So my understanding is we'd be, you would decide on a project that would be helpful for the county and then at that point we can dedicate all of that towards that project, so kind of like a savings plan for that, is what I'm understanding from it.
If you're saying, once there is a fund, how do we use it?
Right.
That's, it would, I think that statute's in there, I think it calls for appropriations and things like that.
Yeah. But again, that's going to be at the discretion of the council at that point, right?
Right.
Not on my, my cume bridge fund.
Right.
We'd set, we set aside a budget, let me just go back to.
Right.
The budget side.
Right.
To pull the money out.
Right.
The city of Wilton's got that, a lot of counties already have these. We're one of the few, I think when I started, we didn't have a cume bridge fund, we didn't have a cume cap fund.
Yeah, actually, if you.
Some will do it for courthouse, some will do it for vehicles, for all their highway trucks and equipment, you know, there's all different avenues, you've seen the list.
Oh, yeah.
If you go to their, if you go to IDLFG or whatever, their, their website, I wanted to make sure that, that the memo I was looking at was the most recent, couldn't find any more recent memos, but I could find a ton of cities and counties that they have reviewed their Cumulative Capital Improvement Fund, so it's, it's a common, it's a commonly used tool.
I think it's important that we set, start the process on it.
Definitely.
I mean, we've been behind the eight ball for a long time and we've got to move it forward.
So if you move that we set a hearing, I'll check the publication dates and try to set it at the, if we can, your next meeting or some other time. I'll get with you if it, if it can't be done on your next commissioners meeting, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
I'll second.
All the paper, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thanks, Roy.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation. Very beneficial. Okay. How about that ordinance for that authorized signature?
That's what you.
That's what we signed. Okay, so that wasn't the emergency declaration?
Yeah, it was.
Okay, so that was both, she's got it listed twice, so.
Yeah, like two separate things.
One was for the authorized signature.
Disaster emergency declaration and then the ordinance for the signature, how you were going to sign the disaster declaration.
Well, I, I read those two lines as one thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
So it is one.
Check.
But, but I did prepare the declaration form, which I, which I don't have, but I mean.
Can it wait to our next meeting or?
I think it can, yeah.
Okay, all right. Just make, put it on our.
The, the declaration, that, that.
Leave the declaration form, just leave, forget the ordinance, but leave the declaration form.
I have the declaration form.
Which one?
The one that has the blank for the number of days.
Yeah, well, there's more than one to do.
Okay.
I did two yesterday.
Boy, did you hear that camera setting? Camera set up?
Well, I've got to plug it into my computer and sure.
Do you have the Zoom link for this next meeting coming up?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Chad just, Chad just sent me a text message, so.
Oh, also, I wanted to let you guys know I have resigned my position on the Indiana LTAP board. Served on that for probably twelve years or something, and it's a great organization, still going to stay close to it, but I think it's time that somebody else steps in and takes over.
Thanks for the years of service.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
It was great.
Did I see, what's her name? Took over?
Jen Sharkey.
Yes, yes.
Is now taking a position with LTAP.
Is it a new position or replacing someone?
They created one, I think.
Okay.
I understand that'd be very good for her.
P sharp.
Yeah, she likes to help all the locals and that'll even give her more room to work like that instead of expand with all her vast knowledge.
Yeah.
She's one of those top fives in the, the state. Kind of like Nate.
Kind of like Nate, yeah.
Kind of like Nate. Start using that term more loosely with him. Look at him. That's right, Ronflog. Yeah, remember that, you're in there.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Hey, I'll miss having her as a resource just direct under the, as another county engineer. Oh, yeah. I'm running out of the good county engineers to, to call on. They are, they're leaving. They're getting, I mean, even, even with the, the state stipend and such. Yeah. They're, they're getting even better offers somewhere else, that's too bad.
Do you want blue ink on this one too?
No.
Okay, no.
Instead of you holding it underneath that, where the.
Only for state, state documents, they need it red.
Right. Grants were the same or not, so.
And it just gives you more.
I can't do that setup without my IT. I don't think we can use that either. I can take my cover off of my camera.
There we go.
You want me to set my computer in front of you guys and I can take my camera off, or my, I cover off my camera?
I think if you select that video link, you might be able to select, you want to tell it which video camera to use, if that, because it loaded that one, right? HD Pro was.
HD Pro?
Yeah, select that one.
Can it down there in the sun, living a privileged life, what game?
No doubt. What the heck?
He's got to be in Florida.
Yeah, he's coming, he's coming back tomorrow at four to be at the city council.
It looks like you got your audio.
Meeting tomorrow night at six thirty, seven.
Okay, your video selected is off, so go ahead and hit your start off video.
I do.
But nope, nope, you've got the camera, so just hit the left of the down arrow.
The left of the down arrow?
Follows fails, just flip it over. Right here. Left, more, there.
Need engineer to figure this out.
There you go.
What's that? So we need engineer to figure this out?
Yeah.
I'm kidding. It's about my pay grade then.
Perfect, I'm done on.
Mine too.
Better can see you guys now.
There we go. I can back him up just a little bit more. There we go.
Council tomorrow at seven?
Yes. City council's at seven also.
Can load the right?
Where are you, Chad?
I'm out of Orlando.
Good for you.
Do I need to say anything else on this, Kevin? Yeah, that's it, never mind. I got you.
Bye.
Good morning.
I hear you, but I don't see you. There you are, hey, Kevin. How you doing?
Good, you?
Good, long time no see.
I know, I like your glasses.
Oh, thanks, they're just, um, like blue blockers because I carry these screens all day.
Right.
All right, I think we have everybody ready?
This is separate, yeah, that's just the commons, so.
Thanks, Chad, you're the boss.
Okay.
Take it away.
Ready?
Take it away, Chad.
All right, so thanks everybody for being here today and being able to accommodate this online meeting and discussion related to redevelopment commission. Everybody's here today based off of a request from the county commissioners to begin the exploration of creating a redevelopment commission, that we're looking at creating a targeted area for a TIF on the south end of Wilton, which will kind of enclose the area around a new roadway that's being built, the Hoover Highway extension, which is part of a track project that the county receives funding through, through the state. So part of that is to kind of look at the area, look at the area for potential growth as we kind of target that, that generalized route for Hoover Highway and making sure that we're sending that for growth, for potential and doing that through the capture of that increment in financing, our funds to be able to do that. So what I thought would be done is for the county to kind of hear from the both financial and legal side on how that process works and then kind of move the steps on, and even some subsequent steps of, okay, so when we do have a project, what does that look like from a TIF modeling revenue perspective, what's this funded to be used for, you know, those different types of things, you know, how do we identify projects, if you start to stick together a, I think, plan? So Heather, it'd probably be good for you to start and then either Matt or Brian or both from the financial kind of aspect and kind of talk about how that works once the redevelopment commission is enacted. So Heather, I'll let you go next.
Okay, great, thanks, Chad. Well, I, I can put together a timetable that will illustrate all these steps, so don't feel like you need to take any notes. I, I have a timetable going without dates thus far because I need some feedback from you all on when, when folks meet. And so once I understand that, then I can lay this out pretty clearly for you. But obviously the first step is for the commissioners to adopt their order creating a redevelopment commission. And the feedback that I need on that front is how, how big of a redevelopment commission are we talking about? Is this a five-member commission or seven? So once I understand that, then I can get you that draft order. And I'll put that together, the commissioners will choose the folks that they want to appoint, and the county council will choose the folks they want to appoint. And I'll put together also the oaths of office, the certificates of appointment, all of that stuff to paper to file. And then once we know who is going to serve on the redevelopment commission, then it's a pretty simple process to move forward with the creation of the TIF allocation area. The redevelopment commission will hold an organizational meeting, elect their officers, and at that same meeting, we can move forward with the adoption of a declaratory resolution if we are in a place to do, to do that at that point. It sounds like we have the information that we need generally to get started, but I understand that there might be a taxpayer that we want to designate so that we can capture depreciable personal property TIF, and that's not something that will be public with regard to the name of that taxpayer until May. So we might want to move forward and have redevelopment commission meet, hold the organizational meeting, but hold off on taking any action with regard to the TIF, or just punt and do all of that in May when we're ready to take all that action at once. After the redevelopment commission meets, then we go to the plan commission, and they adopt a simple order approving what the redevelopment commission has done and finding that what the redevelopment commission has done in the economic development plan that they approved is in line with the plan of development for the county. Then we would publish a, then we would actually go to the commissioners who would adopt a resolution, a resolution approving the plan commission order. Then we publish a ten-day notice. Matt and/or Brian would prepare a tax impact statement that would go out to all your overlapping taxing units and make everybody aware of the economic impact of what the redevelopment commission is undertaking. After that notice has been published and out in the world for ten days, we go back to the redevelopment commission again for that body to adopt a confirmatory resolution confirming what was done at the declaratory resolution stage. And after that step is done, then we have the commissioners meet one more time to adopt a resolution approving creation of the area. And then your TIF area is complete, so we would record the confirmatory resolution and the declaratory, and then file those recorded documents with both the county auditor and the DLGF. Now simultaneously, while we're going through that process, we could also be going through the bond process, which is typically what we do because there's really no reason to wait to get your TIF in order to start walking through the bond process, which is pretty simple. We, I think, would need to create an economic development commission, which Chad, can correct me if I'm wrong on that front? Okay, yes, so we've created an EDC, which is also a simple process and something I could add into the timetable. And then we would need to publish another ten-day notice for an economic development commission meeting, at, at which meaning the EDC members would adopt a resolution approving the bond parameters that the folks from Baker Tilly provide to me, and adopting project report and holding a public hearing on the financing. We need the redevelopment commission to adopt a TIF pledge resolution pledging the TIF to the repayment of the bonds, and the council to adopt a bond ordinance approving the final or substantially final forms of all of the necessary bond documents related to the financing. So that was, that's a lot, that's a lot of meetings. Once all of that is done, then we can execute a final bond purchase agreement, and then about two weeks after, so we have time to draft, appropriate closing documents, and then provide them to you to have everything executed locally and returned to me. About two weeks later, we have a very uneventful funding on the bonds, where a wire is sent, the dollars are received, sitting in a trust deed account, and then the developer can draw those dollars down to fund their project. I ran through that relatively quickly. If anybody asks me questions about these steps, it's easier once you have the timetable in front of you, I think. So there's your high-level explanation, and once I understand when you're commit, when they have board commissioners and when the county council and those different bodies meet, I can throw some dates in this timetable so you can see this, and it's, it's a little easier to record mine around that paper.
But I noticed a little bit from the city commission and, and, you know, you got two different bodies versus a single body of a county council or a city council. Does any of this go through the county council with the exception of the creation of, or the appointment to the redevelopment commission from those numbers?
Um, yeah, the county council also has to adopt a bond ordinance.
Okay.
Is the redevelopment committee the same as the group that you, economic development group? Are they identical? Or do they?
They are not.
Okay.
They are not, no. The economic development commission is created under a different statute, and that will only be a three-person body.
Gotcha.
Appointed by the council.
And can that three-person body, that three-person body of the county economic development commission and not the same members of the often economic development commission for?
Um, they, they could be the same members. They could be.
But not specifically?
But they don't, they certainly don't need to be. And generally, once, once you have an allocation area up and running, you can spend TIF on, or you can spend the dollars in your allocation account on projects that are capital in nature, have an economic development purpose, are in serving or benefiting your economic development area, and are in your economic development plan, which is the document that we put together when we draft that declaratory resolution. However, since we're talking about utilizing the economic development statute instead of a redevelopment statute, which is the statute that we use in Indiana to be able to provide public dollars directly to a private entity. to provide public dollars directly to a private entity developer, and not have to contend with public bidding requirements, um, because we're utilizing that statute, it's a little bit of a higher hurdle, and instead of the in-serving or benefiting test, any of the dollars that you'd like to expend need to be on projects that are in or physically connected to that area. Um, so Chad's well aware of these sorts of rules, and we would draw the lines of the allocation area to connect to the project, so that we can make sure we could fund projects in that specific geographic area.
What could happen if, uh, any of the area ever becomes annexed to the city of Walton?
Well, because we have an outstanding bond obligation, there, there would be an inability to annex while those bonds are outstanding.
Gotcha, thank you.
Chad, are we still talking about taking that entire area that we're talking about and breaking that into pieces, so the shot clock actually wouldn't start on, on doing a specific thing with that area allocation?
That's right, so when you think about TIP, you should understand that there is a larger economic development area, and that is, that's the geographic area where you expect there to be development in the future, but not necessarily the area where you are collecting the increases in AV. So we can certainly make a larger economic development area and say, okay, this whole part of the county, we expect to see some development, but in this smaller chunk is where we're going to have a project right now, where we want to create an, an allocation area, and have a separate allocation fund that is tied to this single developer. So we'll create an allocation area for this project, for the specific project, and only when we issue the bonds that are payable from the TIP generated in this area, does that shot clock start running. And then if you want to create a separate allocation area within the EDA, and we're not issuing bonds payable from that TIP, then the clock doesn't start running on that allocation area, unless and until we issue an obligation payable from that TIP stream.
Yeah, we just kind of felt that, you know, given the unknowns for, at least I thought, and I think Heather agreed with, is the fact that we don't know what the development timeline's gonna look like along that extension of new roadway, uh, that if we have a project, or when we have a project in a, in a specific fight, that we would want to, uh, kind of carve that specific fight out, so we're not having an impact from the larger area, so if it, you know, takes another 10 years before we don't, or before we get another project on the, within that EDA area, that we're not now only, uh, having 10 years left of, or 15 years left of the ability to capture. And so, um, that's kind of why we did, probably make more sense to, um, kind of separate those areas out in individual, at the fight that time. And I think, um, you know, Matt can kind of touch on also the ease, make it a little easier as well for the, um, auditor's office to be able to separate out if there are bonds or other allocations within there, but the, the funding specific for those is a lot easier if you track that.
Chad, are you anticipating that the developer would buy their own bonds? Okay, that's what I got. So, um, I think it's just important to note that that is a really useful way to shift the risk away from the county and to the developer, because the developer is purchasing the bonds, and they're also the party that is generating the TIP, right? So they have a, a serious incentive to follow through on what they tell you they're going to do, because if they fail to meet their, um, their expectations, and they're not generating TIP at the level that they thought that they would, then you're, you're not harmed, because they simply are not paid back as the bondholder. If the TIP is insufficient, then they're not getting their principal and interest payments as the TIP rolled in, or at least not the full amount.
Yeah, so this is the process that we've done on the three projects now in, in Boston. Uh, it just makes more sense, um, it protects the community, it protects the redevelopment commission, and that's, that's certainly a direction we try to push every one of our projects, uh, should they have a specific need that hasn't been at the TIP, um, and for that, so we will continue to push them, uh, push for receiver projects, but I assume at some point in time, that they're going to be one that needs that specific capital funding for the project, rather than putting in their own money and then getting that re-invert them back.
Yeah, but to the extent you can structure it this way, it's really the most efficient, because you don't need a debt service reserve fund, you don't need a minimum coverage amount, you don't, if, if we, it's negotiable, but you could do it as zero interest, um, so, you know, really, not involving a third-party bank makes things a lot simpler, and creates the most amount of AV going directly to the project. And then you don't have to contend with things like the bank saying, listen, this is a very new TIP area, I don't feel comfortable with this as a security, so can you please provide a property tax backup, or a backup of some other county funds? Um, so it, it's a clean, easy way to negotiate a deal with the developer and shift the risk to them. Kevin, I've never heard you cry in my life.
That's 'cause God gave me two ears and one mouth to listen twice as much as I say.
Good policy.
Experience has its advantages. Thanks, Heather.
Anybody have any questions on what it looks like from the financial side with, um, with Brian and Matt, uh, on what they do, or are you kind of interested in knowing what the specific immediate next steps are?
I'd like to know what they need from us next, what do you think?
The next steps?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. What would you guys need from us?
Five or six.
Um, I'd like, how, how many, how big of a redevelopment commission are we thinking? Five member?
No more than that.
Yeah.
That would be my opinion.
Okay, five member.
I agree. You think, Kevin?
Five.
Five, yeah.
Okay. When does the, when do the board of commissioners typically meet?
First and third Monday of each month, at nine.
First and third month?
Roughly nine.
All right, and the council?
First Tuesday, after the commissioners' meeting.
All right, and the redevelopment commission, do you anticipate them meeting as needed, or on some, with some regularity?
As needed.
I would suggest that needed.
Yeah, I think as needed.
Correct.
All right, um, are folks willing to suspend the rules and consider an ordinance in one meeting, or should I always assume two?
I'd assume one.
I would assume one, your first option.
Yeah, you don't want to slow it down when it's really the right thing to do.
Okay. And the local newspapers, or the Ossian Journal and the News Banner?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, then, I would say the next step is for me to take that information that you just provided, and put together a timetable, so that you don't have to listen to me ramble on for 10 minutes about what all the steps are, and can actually see what all the steps are. Um, and then I will assume, Chad, on that timetable, that we don't get started with the redevelopment commission meeting until May at some point, because that's when the taxpayer's gonna be out in the world?
Um, I'll talk to them and see which steps they wanna take, um, it might make them open to create it and go through one process, rather than going through two processes, which means things, so, uh, but I'll, I'll talk to the commissioners and see exactly what they wanna do.
Okay, and I'll put together the order that you need to create, the redevelopment commission, and the oaths, and appointments, and all, all those things, and I'll put that together for the EDC as well. So the next step will really be figuring out who you want to fill those seats, and sometimes that's time-consuming on your end, I understand, so I'll build in a fair amount of time, a couple weeks for that, um, and then we'll need to be putting together the final maps and parcel lists of what you want the EDA and the two allocation areas to look like, and then, um, then we can just get started in going through all those steps that I outlined. And, and then we'll need Matt and Brian to put together sort of a high-level term sheet of what this deal is going to look like, and what it can finance.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Any other final questions for Heather, or for Ronnie, or Matt at all? Heather and Chad did such a good job of describing everything. She just, you guys didn't leave much for Brian and I to cover this, because we're, we're happy to answer any financial questions right now, or, or down the line, as people process all of this more.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Uh, thanks, everybody, for being here, for, uh, Heather indicated, showed me the timelines, how the creation, I did first step, was creating the RV TIP, um, and then identifying who those numbers are, and then getting through those steps, and then once we start to have that, uh, understanding of exactly where the allocation areas, then we'll, we'll start kind of working with the redevelopment commission on, on finding that allocation area, and what kind of farm structures and stuff you can look at for when a project comes.
All right, great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wear your sunblock, Chad.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little color.
Bye, Heather.
Thank you.
Bye, see you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. The meeting, there we go, you're done. Okay.
So they're gonna give us the blueprint to form that board?
Yeah, a timetable, what everything needs to.
And then do we, from that board, set up our own, um, I guess, chain notifications, so we can stay involved in that entire process as it's going?
Oh, yeah, everybody will be copied, and everything that happens.
Before you meet.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is too important.
Yeah, this, this initial phase of this right now, just here's the roadmap, and then moving on.
Okay.
Yep, I understand, good.
Yep, a ton of things happening.
Oh, sorry. Anything else, Roy?
Roy, thank you for all the research and everything you provided. It was very helpful to me.
Lisa, anything? Jessica? Nothing? Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's nothing else.
Salute.
You're done. Thank you.